Can I get in on this? I want another one, two, one, two. Oh, you thought it was through. This was just one assignment, boo. Judge checking with God, getting next instructions. You need to advocate, reach out, he might be coming.
This young black king needs no introduction. When he shows up, haters hate seeing him coming.
And no, he's not Malcolm, he's not Martin either. He got his own style. Jada, yeah, we see ya.
This crew, this crew, they not looking for the credit. Advocates on the move. This crew, this crew, shifting the atmosphere. Advocates on the move.
And when he comes through, you know they coming too. Ay yo, I N A, where you at, what it do? They got receipts, they got them files. They gone investigating advocate, holding it down.
And when it comes to intel, you know they showing out. You smiling in jazz face.
Hold up, check that file. Don't run up on them either, they always in the crowd. I N A got his back, you don't know when they around.
This crew, this crew.
Hello, everybody, how you doing? This is Investigate and Advocate. Now I'm your host Jedidiah Brown. And we're actually broadcasting approximately 20 minutes later than what is supposed to be a special Harvey Village or city meeting. In this city meeting, it is expected that the mayor of the city of Harvey, Christopher J. Clark, is going to be making an announcement about the financial reality of the city. As you would see right here in this reporting in Harvey Politics, it is hereby given that the city of Harvey would hold a special city council meeting on Thursday, October 16th, 2025 at 5:30. Said meeting has been called by Chris Clark. The meeting will be held at 14618 Lincoln Avenue in Harvey, Illinois, for purposes of considering the following agenda. The meeting called Order, the roll call of city council members, the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Executive session if necessary, and the presentation of Harvey's financial situation. Right now, the meeting is now underway, and we're gonna be going into the meeting as soon as the invocation and pledge of allegiance either concludes or begins with what we hope to be, what we would hope to be successful. I'm hoping that we will successfully be able to broadcast this last-minute meeting notice that we've all received simultaneously at the same time by one of our reporters or our leaders who is going to operate as a reporter for Investigate and Advocate. So I'm asking that you please bear with me. However, I am working hard to get a feed that we can actually depend on and trust and have confidence in. Give me one sec. Give me a second, John, listen, you need to go directly through.
Well, thank you very much for that comment. That's who we know. We appreciate your addition at this particular point in time. But I would like, prior to going into the rest of the meeting, if there is no objection, so that we can hear from the residents or those who are not residents, as far as this particular matter is concerned. Is there any objection to allowing public comment to come before the presentation?
Obviously, getting ready for public comments so the public can speak. I guarantee you.
Hearing them, then we move number six public comment to number five, and number five to number six.
They're getting ready to have special public comment where the financial status of Harvey is about to be announced and addressed by the mayor and his staff to the city. So that I could be clear here, this, I'm actually gonna just hold my commentary because there's a lot of things that I would like to say. But obviously, this is going to be a moment for some people to try to get their two minutes of fame or 15 minutes of fame. So, public comment, I'm sure, will be called.
And state your name. Please leave your comments in three minutes. Another speaker may donate his time to another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comments for the purpose of campaigning or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time. The council cannot engage in conversation in public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff during revenue or business hours. Our first public comment is Amanda A., followed by Ryan Simulski. Amanda A.
Good evening, everyone. Special City Council meeting, another thing that of this administration that gives me pause. Number one, changing of the public comment, to me, is a little confusing because it doesn't allow us to even give a comment about the ordinance, about financial distress city law, after, I mean, after it has been presented, that we have to speak before. So I don't know if, again, that just seems to be, gives me a little pause and makes me... It just seems like there's a lot of trickery going on in this administration, and it gives me pause. Also, it gives me pause about the meeting on Sunday, the emergency meeting, where, I'm assuming, if the meeting was on Sunday, you all posted the agenda on a Friday after business hours. No one knew about it, and then to make a snarky comment saying, oh, we had public comment. Of course, public comment was a part of the agenda, but the public was not there to give comment. So again, that gives me pause to have an emergency meeting that the public did not know about, and then you go to social media to post about this meeting, but didn't use social media to make us aware of the meeting on Sunday. That kind of gives me pause. And I'm also a little not happy with the audit that's on the finance committee because the financial distress city law, according to the Illinois Municipal League, basically declares us, quote-unquote, bankrupt, and the city has, the state has to step in to help us with the financials. But when you all are sitting in these meetings, I've been coming to every quarter, and yet, you talk about these bills, you unanimously pass them with no list, with no debate, and then here we are at the 11th hour screaming for help. When, what's the purpose of having a finance committee if we're not discussing this? This financial distress city law didn't happen overnight. This has been years of mismanagement. And what do you all mean for every quarter if you're not going to address the elephant in the room? And then you decided to have gospel concerts and carnivals in the community? Those things cost us money, and if we don't have the money to have it, that's fine. But to scream bankrupt and then bring in a famous artist and pay them thousands of dollars, it doesn't make any sense. And whatever you're gonna say in the presentation that you're gonna have after this, it really doesn't mean anything because we shouldn't have invented this point to begin with. And it just really gives me pause. It's like, what are we paying the lobbyists for? What are we paying for all these things for? And then you all say, it's, we have all these donations, but we've never seen a letter of thank you for a donation, we've never seen a budget. We also are paying conspiracy to do an audit for us, and then what does that mean? Why are we paying conspiracy to do a 2022 audit? And then we're gonna declare basically that we are in financial distress and we need the state to come in?
Three seconds.
It just doesn't make any sense here.
Next is Ryan Simulski, followed by Ruby Downey.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan. I'm with the Harvey Historical Society, I'm also a Harvey resident. I, to thank Amanda and Miss Ask You for those comments. I definitely second all of those. As you can see, I'm still in my work clothes from working on properties because this, the whole past six years, unfortunately, under Mayor Clark's administration has, even though I did support Mr. Clark initially, it's just been a lot of unanswered questions. And another secret meeting after a secret meeting on Sunday, calling at 5:30 at a church instead of City Hall. I mean, most people are still working. Why isn't it at 7 o'clock? It's all very strange. I wanted to echo the concern about, why did we just spend $30,000 on the gospel concert? If the city is, quote-unquote, broke, as Mayor Clark insists. What about all the fires that we're having? Why are there fires all the time? I've talked to the fire chief and other folks in the city. They never have any explanation. They just say, oh, squatters. So squatters are just regularly sending fires in Harvey? And we don't, we don't really have appropriate arson investigations going on? We don't have any recording in the public about that? I mean, doesn't seem very, you know, it seems pretty suspicious to me. What about all of our unsolved crimes? What about the activist Jedidiah Brown, who's working with Mayor Clark, who bragged about calling ICE to Harvey? And during the last city council meeting, because the mayor had canceled the one that we were supposed to have the most recently, Mayor Clark, instead of just saying, hey, I support everybody, human rights are human rights, told all of us we should just stay quiet. That's the best way to deal with, you know, ICE violating human rights throughout the Chicago blind area. I mean, it doesn't cost any money to at least just say, hey, we think everybody should be treated fairly. But I guess we shouldn't be surprised, right? I've been arrested, my older one's been arrested, many of us have been arrested, and our rights have been violated just for asking questions about where our money's going. So again, that's been six years of hiding money, arresting his opponents, hitting people who say something under their breath at city council meeting, and now we have another secret meeting tonight to ask the state to take over our finances? So what, and as Amanda said, how are we even really supposed to know what to ask for public comment?
Thirty seconds.
Because we don't, nothing has been explained. It's just all, it's, you know, we really just don't get told anything in this city. They're talked down to, and told that we're stupid, and told that Mayor Clark's the best mayor ever, that we should all just sit down and shut up. And, but at the same time, we have all these department heads, including the mayor and other staff members, making six figures salaries from our tax money. So something's not adding up.
You're timed in.
Thank you. Next, Ruby Downey, followed by Kennedy Harris.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy that we do have a complement of people present so that we can get an understanding as to what actually is happening. And I think that my thoughts about the entire situation and with that of the concerned citizens here at Harvey is that we have come out to find out the actual status rather than criticizing what is going on. We got to see what can we do to rectify the situation? How did we get into this kind of situation? Was it overnight? No. And this is what I personally am waiting to hear from our mayor as to the actual status and why we are here in the beginning, and what can we do about it? A lot of the things that have been mentioned previously, not at this particular meeting, it was about what is God's password? Why do we stand in the path of retroactive things when we need to be going forward? The current things are what need to be moved about. We are citizens here at our height, paying high taxes, doing everything possible to move forward. And yet, we are reacting in many instances in the manner of saying, it doesn't matter. But it does matter, it does matter. There are many of us that are sitting here that are toiling every day to just maintain an individual status. Not necessarily trying to go out and create a lot of hub things that are not necessary. We need to think harder and we need to work harder. And I love each and every one of you as citizens of Harvey and have been in the community over 56 years. So I can see what the difference is. I can see what is needed, what has been done, and what we need to move forward with. And I thank each of you for your attendance. Lovely.
Next, Mayor Kennedy Harris.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I was hoping that after the presentation today, that the following bullet points would be addressed. And if not, if there is something that we'll go out to the community to address, explain what exactly is going to occur if this indeed something that is passed by the city. Number one, the credit rating. Not just the credit rating on Harvey, but also the villagers that share zip code with Harvey. Will this affect capital projects or potential development projects moving forward? That's a question that someone needs to ask, a decision maker needs to ask. Another question, excuse me, long-term potential. We have seen or we live in a state where the executive branch of the government has day-to-day effects in everyday life. How would this decision affect Harvey residents in our day-to-day life? Again, how does this affect city taxing bodies within the city? This will slow funding because when everything has to be approved through the state, that means that the state is going to look at everything. So will this, this will slow funding to the library and also the park district? As decision makers, the executive branch of the government in the city of Harvey, have you spoken with, have you sat down with your other taxing bodies in your community to make sure that this is the best decision possible? Also, have you looked at or had conversations with other financially distressed cities? And how has it worked for them? What type of cuts did they have to make? What kind of decisions did they have to make? Was it a positive? Was it a negative? Was there anything they would have done differently? Was there any, or anything they would have asked of if they knew, now that they are now in that financially distressed situation? As decision makers, have you done your research and asked these questions? Again, potential plan of the state in regards to Harvey? What is their vision if they intend to take over the finances of Harvey? Do they plan to cut services? Do they plan to divert funds to increase certain services?
Thirty seconds, okay?
And then lastly, you must express to the homeowners that this will affect their, the value of their homes. This will lower the value of your home. How will this affect homeowners? How will this affect their taxes moving forward if they're potentially selling, want to sell their property? If there are seniors here that have their property indifferent to fund their end-of-life things?
Three seconds. Little bit.
Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is five presentation of Harvey's financial situation, five A and ordinance requests and certification and designation under the financially distressed city law. Welcome. I think everyone, coming out, it's evening. To the people of U.S. matters regarding the city of Harvey, this is actually a very narrow meeting. The first thing that happens, of course, when someone sees an agenda like this is to basically try to take over the narrative, narrative of making it something that they want to make it into. As far as the council is concerned, council, we will be asking you for one specific thing at this particular moment in time. But before we do so, we want to make sure that council and also our public understand current financial conditions in Harvey. In order to do so, it is also important for us to understand how we got to where we are and why things are where they are at this particular point in time. So, first of all, the city of Harvey is and will continue to be committed to operating in full transparency. This is something that I fought for when I was an augment. It's something that other members of our council have fought for and stands for in all of our administration. We're in the next, we're educating everyone on our current financial situation the best that we possibly can at this particular time. Of course, there are going to be tricky questions. We will have time for that, and we will have time to address those, and we will try to address those as best as we possibly can. But we, at the same time, we have actions that we need to, in my opinion, take care of today, next slide. So we're gonna go into the history of the city, next slide. Now, prior to this administration, there were actually several administrations in the city of Harvey. We're gonna start in 1995 with the Nicholas Graves situation and the administration. Nicholas Graves was the mayor of the city of Harvey from 1995 to 2003. At that particular point in time, after him, of course, followed the alderman mayor, Dr. Killall, from 2003 to 2019, and then this administration at 2019 until the present day, next slide. Under the Killalls, the Graves administration, the city struggled with, first of all, well, probably one of the biggest revenue generation drains in the city of Harvey, which was, of course, Dixie Square Mall. But even though we had those challenges, and there were plenty of challenges under the Nicholas Graves administration, the Nicholas Graves administration was able to leave office in 2003 with approximately a $10 million surplus. So when we went into the Killall administration, we came in with approximately a $10 million surplus. Next slide. And then from the Killall administration, next slide. And through that time, as you can see in the presentation through 2000 and 2009, in 2010, there were bond offers for the Hotel View. For those of you who are not familiar with the Hotel View, there used to be a Holiday Inn on approximately 171st and Halston. At that particular point in time, the Holiday Inn had closed and became another hotel, and eventually that hotel closed its doors as well. Well, I guess in an attempt, because I really can't speak on that as far as what the actual purpose was. But during that time, there was a bond that exploded to try to rehabilitate that hotel. And that was in 2008, 2009, 2010, bond offers. At that particular point in time, Harvey, under the previous administration, engaged in a scheme that is quoted to divert bond proceeds for improper purposes. These are not my statements. These are statements that were filed in the complaint by the Securities and Exchange Commission. And as upon this scheme, Harvey made representation and omission to investors about how those proceeds would be used. Well, of course, those proceeds were not used the way that they were supposed to be. And it was supposed to support the construction of the new hotel. The new hotel was never built. Those bonds were supposed to be repaid from the revenue streams from the hotel. But once again, the hotel was never built. Basically, the hotel would generate what is called a hotel motel sale and sales tax to help to pay off the bond that was taken out during this particular point in time, next slide. The city paid the developer, no, previous slide, please. The city paid the developer for the hotel. The hotel was never built. Now, that's important to know because the city took out a bond. The city paid the developer for the hotel, but the hotel was never built. So let's just say you decide to take out a loan for a vehicle. And you take out, let's say, $50,000 for the vehicle. But then you decide that after you get the loan for the vehicle, you're not going to buy the vehicle. You're just going to keep the money and use the money for other things. Maybe you're shopping, buy some clothes, buy some other things that you may need. Maybe you'll be shopping, buy some clothes, buy some other things that you may need, uh things you feel that you need, but you don't use that money for what it was intended for. That is what happened here. And based on the records, the hotel was never built. But but additionally, the city diverted one point seven million dollars that was raised through the bond offering and put that into its operation account. Okay, now, during that time, there were so many investigations from the Chicago Tribune. The Chicago Tribune itself had been nominated for a Pulitzer Prize based on its investigative journalism into the city of Harvey. And two of its quotes were, "The money borrowed on the backs of taxpayers there from two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten largely went into a black hole of accountability, with the hotel to this day left half dead and Harvey residents on the hook to make loan payments of more than twenty million with no, with no record of exactly where it went." Now, some may say, well, how can it go from a million to twenty million? Those numbers are unnecessary. John, over the course of the borrowed money, and that hook was never, the money disappeared. Second quote, Killal has since repeatedly refused to answer questions about the deal under hope citing his constitutional right to avoid giving answers that could be used to prosecute that, next slide. And so as a result, as you see on this slide, it says fine, but no repayment order. So the money disappeared. But we and taxpayers in the city of Harvey were still on the hook for that money. We still have to pay that money back. So as a result, Harvey mayor Killal at that time was fined ten thousand dollars. Millions of dollars disappeared. And he was fined ten thousand dollars for the fraudulent bond offerings through the S E C investigation. And he was also uh ordered to no longer participate in municipal bond offerings for the rest of his life. But that didn't just have an impact on him. It had an impact on our city. Because our city, at that particular point in time, was ordered for a period of time to no longer be able to participate in bond offerings as well. Now, for those who who don't understand uh the bond offering itself, it's basically a loan that a city takes out. The city takes out that loan to try to fund projects in the city. So where if you want to do some work to your home, or you want to, once again, get a new vehicle, you may not have the cash on hand. So you go ahead and you take out a loan to do something. Well, some of the things that are looked at when you decide to take out the loan, what's the first thing they look at when they want to figure out that they're gonna give you the loan? The credit. They wanna know, what have you done with money that you have been loaned previously? So they look at your credit. In this particular case, when this issue happened and took place in the city of Harvey, it drove whatever bond rating the city of Harvey may have had into the gutter. So even if, say, for instance, the city wants to be able to get a loan, it probably would be so useless that would be like a payday loan. Okay, and the interest rate would be so high. If someone were to ask them on money, but at this particular point in time, no, entirely off the table. So where other communities have the ability to get able to take care of projects in their community. And that's really what you see in the vast majority of cities around us. It's not that there, some of them do have a little bit of money, but the vast majority of them, they use that tool. Their ability to be able to borrow, which allows them to be able to take care of the things that they need to take care of. Harvey does not have the ability to do that. Okay? So we are already, instead of a three-legged soup, we own a two-legged soup. Because one of those legs already are. The ability to be able to use those things. And the only thing that happened during this particular point in time was a ten thousand dollar fine and no longer dissolving in bonds for the rest of one slide, next slide. While all of that was going on, the city of Harvey was still having to pay more and more, more and more lawsuits, more and more litigation, more and more compensation cases. And this is one where the city of Harvey had Harvey had to pay one point four million dollars. I know some people in this room have heard of this particular issue. But Harvey had to pay one point four million dollars to settle the suit because of the simple fact that the city had a law that some of the officers, unfortunately, including the mayor, framed a young man and sent him to jail. He was framed in such a way that the Illinois Supreme Court issued him and issued issued him a certificate of innocence. Not saying that he was found not guilty, but that he was innocent and he was framed. Now, those are the the lawsuits that, of course, you know, all the things that we have to deal with are definitely unnecessary. And those are the things that cost our city more and more money. But that's what was happening is as this is going on, as we have twenty million dollars that we basically lost in a hotel meeting, they would turn it around and we had to pay another one point four million on a lawsuit. They should have never heard, next uh slide. But once again, the Chicago Tribune, and I have to really um give some uh credit to those uh journalists at that particular point in time. Because they wrote and wrote and wrote and wrote, and this is important when we go into where we're going to get because some people try to act as if, they never knew that any of this stuff was happening. Some folks are trying to act as if, I mean, maybe they were living under a rock at that time. And they absolutely no clue that this was happening in the city of Harvey. Those who live in the city of Harvey know what's happening. And many of those who live in the Chicago that area knew that it was happening, but people turned a blind eye. Look at it. Harvey spending cash it doesn't have. We'll start off with sheriff's deputies auditors descend on Harvey City Hall. That's March twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen. This is around the time that, you remember this joke, when we were paying the mayor's uh son and 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 old woman, Joenski, paying the mayor's son eighty thousand dollars a year to do a Facebook page for the city. Harvey spending cash it doesn't have, March twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Month second, two thousand and fourteen, FBI clams up on role in Harvey's mayoral election. Okay, now, we haven't touched too much into that, but basically what that refers to is the fact that a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, the the FBI gave the administration that candidate at the time, Eric Killal, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to support his campaign. Your federal government gave the candidate a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to support his campaign for me. Okay? February eighteen, two thousand and fourteen, excuse me, February thirty-third, two thousand and fourteen, Harvey mayor belatedly files three years of campaign reports. There were eight in two thousand and fourteen, lawmen receive answers from feds about Harvey. Uh Big Herbert and Robin Kelly, Congressman Robin Kelly, both sent a letter to the Department of Justice asking for answers on how a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of federal funds ended up in the campaign funds for Eric J. Killal. If you want the answers to their questions, you need to ask them, but they definitely wrote a letter. Um then, then the Chicago Tribune came up with two thousand and fourteen, February thirteenth, an editorial says Harvey was a city abused and ignored. And finally, February twelfth, sheriff seeks review to review the finances and police of suburbs. These are just a few of the things, because everybody, the Chicago Tribune was writing something about the city of Harvey. And as the Chicago Tribune was writing it, Channel Nine was also recording it, because that's the Tribune company, yeah, they're not the one. They were also recording it. So as these things were happening, people were watching our city go into the ditch. That's exactly what they were doing. Now, there are some, of course, who stood to benefit, and they'll be the first ones to jump up and say, uh, there's a different type of story. But you can read it for yourself. Next slide. At which point in time, myself, Shirley Joenski, Joseph Whittington, Lamont Brown, decided to pin a letter to the federal government, to the state government, the county government, and anyone else who would listen, to ask them to step into the city of Harvey and offer us some assistance. There was enough information that was already there. The Department of Justice had already done a report on the the police department, saying that the police department did not keep records. So they couldn't find, they were supposed to investigate the department to find out what the use of force was. But they couldn't find out what the use of force was because the department did not keep the records to demonstrate what its use of force was. The Cook County Sheriff had did a a report on the city of Harvey and said that tow truck money was missing. And they couldn't account for where the money for the tow's went. That money was supposed to go into the coffins to help to pay down debt. But for some reason, it just disappeared and went somewhere else. And all the while, Shirley Joenski, Joseph Whittington, Lamont Brown and myself kept pleading over and over again for help. We began to contest, even though some like to say we didn't show up in meetings eighteen times, isn't that right, Sheriff? We began to protest what was happening in this city, next slide. And so, of course, the editorial board of the Chicago Tribune wrote a um wrote a uh uh editorial about the city of Harvey. Excuse me, and basically, what was happening and what was happening, next slide. Once again, Jomar, Matt Walberg, Kep Bryant, the editorial called on Governor Raul at the time, to send the Department of Revenue agent to Harvey to encourage the state police to investigate. Was that done? None. Editorial suggested that the Illinois Auditor General could review Harvey's finances. Was that done? None. Actually, if I'm correct, Shirley Joenski, we tried to pass a or an ordinance to allow Tom Dart to be the uh Inspector General at that order, Auditor General at that particular point in time, to take a look at the finances. And even though Tom Dart um tried and wanted to get involved, that particular ordinance was vetoed by Eric Killal. Next slide. The victims, again, who are the residents of Harvey and rely on functional government to serve them. Let it sink in. All the elected officials who care deeply about their city are pleading for help in whatever way, under whatever legal authority you may have, to intervene into the city of Harvey. Ignoring them further victimizes the residents of this troubled city and the all the brave enough to speak out, Christopher Florence, Whittington, Shirley Joenski. Next slide, please. So once again, state terms, light eye to the problems in Harvey. Next slide. And while that was going on, we had additional headlines. Strip club gave mayor of Illinois for years to allow prostitution at the venue, fed safe. And these are all things that had to be defended in the city of Harvey. This brings, for those who think that maybe I'm not the best mayor in the world, okay? Imagine, oh, let's go back to the days of I rest, it's all just that, Marion Barry, when that first hit the news, and it was said that Marion Barry was smoking crack out of his gullet. How that impacted Washington D.C. For Mayor Ford in Canada, I think he was the mayor, Toronto, I think he was, or Vancouver, one of them. And when your mayor and leadership is made to look that way, it diminishes the credibility, faith, and belief in the institution in which you serve. It diminishes the faith, credibility, and belief in those people because in general, this does not happen. But according to this report, former Harvey L. American Killal's brother was convicted in the scheme, which occurred when he was in office. Federal prosecutor says Killal has not been charged. Well, you may not even know the glory of that, I'm pretty sure somebody will run to his defense as soon as they possibly can. Uh we'll move on to the next slide. And it just continued on and on, next slide. Continued on and on, so it's in the form of Harvey Mayor Killal pleading guilty and Brian Recharge. So while we have no credit, because our credit has gone down to the dirt, then the overall perception of the city is that the city is just absolutely crippled. That's the way that it looks. And I can guarantee you, some of y'all would need a loan, your cousin, who don't do whatever he or she is supposed to do, five dollars to go do something. Imagine someone coming to you and saying to you that they want to borrow fifty million, two hundred million. And this is the behavior that has been engaging. Next uh slide, please. In addition to that, the city of Harvey purchased water from the city of Chicago and signed it so with the five municipalities, Vicksmore, East Hazel Press, Hazel Press, Homewood, and Halston. We used to have plenty more um customers. We don't have as many now. But they sold water. And of course, they sold water to, if you're a resident of Harvey, hmm. They sold it to us. And actually, in fact, we had paid the highest bill for all of those women's families, even though we were the ones selling the water. Can you imagine, can you imagine being a farmer and having a milking cow and actually charging yourself more for milking? That's what was happening in the city of Harvey. And the city billed those downstream communities for water, and they collected that revenue and then failed to pay it to the city of Chicago. That's two. Let's go back. First was the hotel motel bill. Money was taken, money disappeared, money that we had to pay back. Money was used for operations and other things, but we still wanted to look for. City billed the downstream municipalities for their water, but never paid that money to the city of Chicago, next slide. Now, some of y'all are gonna say, no, that can't be true. Well, Harvey illegally diverted water and cash owed to Chicago, millions missing. Judge rules, not plot rules, judge rules. We went to the court, the city of Harvey went to court, and some of the people in this room also went as well, concerned citizens of the city of concerned citizens of the city of Harvey. And during that time, it was established that the city of Harvey under previous administration had diverted water and cash that was owed to Chicago, and the money disappeared. So, even though the money disappeared, we never paid as a city, the city of Chicago, yet you still owe that money to the city of Chicago. The city of Harvey does. Next slide. So then judge ordered Harvey to pay Chicago twenty-six million in unpaid water bills. So we got it so far, we got twenty, twenty million in a, in a bond deal, we got another twenty-six million. Okay, my mathematicians out there, I'm pretty sure y'all figured that out real quick, that's forty-six million dollars already, that we have been on the hook for, that we didn't have the money for, but the money disappeared. Next slide. The judge in that particular case, Kathleen Patrick, said the city's leaders failed to grasp the severity of their years of illegal conduct. Illegal conduct. So we got it, bond money missing for hotels, nobody ever been charged, nobody going to jail. We got it, years of illegal conduct, where millions of dollars were missing, and twenty-six million was misspent. No charges. But we had to, what did we get as a result? What was our door prize? Our door prize was a water receiver. And a water receiver was appointed to the city of Harvey to oversee the water money. And the water receiver ended up charging the city of Harvey, how much money was it? Four hours? Four hours? Four hundred dollars, exactly four hundred dollars, right? Four million dollars. So in addition to the twenty-six million, the twenty million, the receiver hits us up for another four. And that water receiver was appointed by the courts. So we've been getting out of that. Now, in two thousand fifteen, Mayor Manuel, next slide, announced a settlement with the city of Chicago. So this is, this is all great. The city of Harvey is interested in a settlement with the city of Harvey to collect the unpaid water bills on behalf of Chicago taxpayers. Action ensues, more than thirty million will be recruited from all four suburban municipalities who owe the Chicago taxpayers. That was in two thousand fifteen. Was it unpaid? None. And we found ourselves, well, we again, Shirley Juwinski, back in forty ten. And each, and every time that you're in court, we not only have to deal with the publicity of it all, we also have to pay attorneys to represent the city in these particular cases. Next slide, please. So... We asked for oversight. Shirley Juwinski, Joe Whittington, sitting right here, myself, we asked for oversight. That was vetoed. Next, uh, lawsuit. And then came from a guy's head. Fire pension lawsuit. Now, before I make my statements here, I want to make sure that everybody in the room understands how a police department, how a fire department, especially the fire department, the fire is the best. I don't know better than fire department, I gotta honest to say. And, uh, as far as the police department, even though it's had some challenges, the police department has been trying to run and make some significant changes in the way it operates and in, in, in solving a cases in the city of Harvey. So they are to be committed, but this is not them, this is the fire pension, okay? And before we get into that, I also got on Fox News, a national program, and, and got on there and talked to the reporter at the time, and said to the reporter that the pensions need to be paid. It's important, those pensions were a part of the promise that we made to the people who served as our first responders. And so it was important that we pay those pensions. But how they get paid is a total disagreement. So until two thousand ten, the fire pension board filed a lawsuit alleging that since two thousand five, the city failed to make contributions to its fund. Actually, wasn't it ten years ago, was it? It was two, it was two, it was ten years, that the city of Harvey had not paid the pension, um, obligations to both fire and to police. And in two thousand fifteen, the trial court held that the city was liable for more than fifteen million dollars in damage. Now, a lot of things happened at that particular point in time, and actually, you know, in my opinion, we could have worked to settle that amongst ourselves, but it didn't work that way. So, that's from the Chicago Tribune, that's it again, for those Chicago Tribune, if you go back and you find the quote, quote, Harvey has set up a collision course, oh, a collision course over many years, where the beneficiaries of the firefighters' pension fund are being paid substantially extra money that the firefighters have themselves contributed to the pension fund. And the money the pension fund earns from investments, the court wrote, because it went in the court again. In essence, Harvey is robbing Peter to pay Paul. But what happens when Peter retires? Money misses, woman, is missing. And instead of them being, instead of the pension holders at the time being paid from the investments, what do you call that thing? It was a pyramid scheme, that's what it was. You familiar with a pyramid scheme? And it basically took the money from what was coming in to pay off the people who were owed. Okay? And the people who, of course, paying the money that was coming in, would never, ever get the opportunity to recoup the return on their investments. But people are convicted of pyramid schemes, usually what happens? What's it burning, man? What happens? People get charged, people go to jail. When the case in the city of Harvey, the fifteen million dollars wasn't paid, and nothing happens. Next slide, please. So in two thousand eighteen, the city entered into a settlement agreement with the pension fund. And in two thousand sixteen, the state passed a law basically allowing the state comptroller to seize the money that the municipality owed to the pension, in extreme cases of pension mismatch. Well, this is one of those cases. So the pension, fire pension fund, the fire pension fund, was sixty-seven point six million dollars underfunded, with a twelve percent funded ratio. And after racking up, as it says, an unfunded liability of thirty-six point seven million dollars at a fund rate of twenty-nine percent, the police pension sued also. So we were sued by police and fire. And of course, no one happened, of course, we were supposed to pay them. They weren't paying, they were supposed to be paying. The court said they were supposed to be paid, and we still didn't pay. And so the police and the fire pension decided that they were going to take action. The seizure of state funding for pensions has resulted in significant layoffs of critical services. Now, this was back in two thousand eighteen. Next slide. So let me quit. This is not the fault of any city employee, it's not the fault of any employee, and specifically, our fire and police. As a mayor, I could not be proud of our first responders, I could not be proud of our chiefs. Couldn't be proud of them. They have done phenomenal jobs, keeping this thing together. I definitely choose, and everybody that goes, that follows, has done a fantastic job, and it's not their fault. It's not the fault of the residents of Harvey either. You've seen cuts in service in two thousand, two thousand eighteen, we saw half the fire department was cut. You remember that, guys? Half the police department was cut in two thousand eighteen because of this. And we've seen cuts in crucial services, at one point in time, we could not even get garbage service. And the city of Harvey was on television because we weren't paying the garbage bill. But what this does is this drives us into a situation where the city, because of all that we owe, will, um, impacts us. So, next slide. So by the end of the Calhoun administration, the city of Harvey went from a ten million dollar surplus to a hundred and sixty-four million dollars in debt. And nobody in the administration was charged with crime. My, um, we only have a little bit more to go, but my, uh, city administrator's talking, and we probably need to take a break here. So it depends on the council, if the council wants to do something, or would you like the people? Yeah, motion by the first, or the second, by the third, all in favor of seeing if I'm by saying aye? Go suppose. Here and now, we'll take a break for five minutes. Oh, we do have. The attorney, they will turn at six fifty-five.
Okay, so, a lot of what he said is true. But, you know, it's all stuff that's on, he was not married.
Yeah.
But it's not, I don't think he's lying, like, actually, most of this is factual.
I mean, it's very well, I mean, obviously, you know, it's putting a lot of resources on his side, so, I'm like, yeah.
Right. And that's exactly. And that's what I'm blessed, he was doing, he's been here for many years under Eric Kellogg. So, you know, my theory is that he knows, you know, um, everyone knows about him. He knows everything. Now, Clark, he was in, um, in before his first term of office, you know, he and God, um, I've got a lot of performance here, like, I don't know, like, I don't know.
All rights, Brad. Okay, hold on, I'm not even sure. Are you all, yeah, it's still live. Okay, hello, everybody, how y'all doing? Um, I'm not exactly sure at the moment, give me two, three, two, one. If you could see and hear me clearly, please, if you don't mind, put a, um, put a, um, two. Is that the end of the meeting, or are they in recess? Someone put a two, just so that I can know that I can be, that I'm being heard. Eight. Oh, good. All right, I'm so sorry that I didn't know that, because it sometimes looked a little different on my side versus what you all can see, as well as, uh, uh, some of the props that I have, uh, that I look at. It did say on air, but it also looked like it was frozen. I apologize about that. So you all, it looks like there is, or that was a conclusion of a special meeting, uh, with the Harvey mayor, given the financial reality of the city. And I was not able to listen, and I will be going back to take it in. And, um, someone said, is it over? So let me get clarity on that before I cut this out. I don't know, I thought it was. I was told to get to the screen, give me a sec. Oh, they're taking a break. Okay, so if they're taking a break, then that means that we'll be coming back to it as well. Please, give me a minute. Okay, so they, okay, so then let me put this in the bottom of the screen then, hold on one second. You guys, we are actually utilizing a stream, because unfortunately, our angle is not the best angle, or the most. Lord, give me a producer again one day. Lord, give me a producer again one day. God gonna give I N A, a real producer, one day. So you guys have seen what I'm assuming would now be the first half of the meeting, that, uh, the mayor has given the state of the financial reality of the city of Harvey, and I hope that it has put things into perspective, um, for you. I did not listen to the meeting as of yet, because I'm actually managing several issues at one time, and I want to give a shout out to my For the Culture family, because while this is being reported to you all, we are actually working on a very, very, very serious, life-in-depth domestic violence situation, where I N A is stepping in, interceding that situation, to hopefully bring some relief and, in our opinion, save a life. And so those of you all who are in For the Culture, who are part of that process, I want to thank you and give you a public acknowledgement, um, and give you and express to you my public gratitude, and hopefully we'll be able to share about how we stood together to help someone overcome a truly unfortunate space. But that's what's going on while this is happening, and so I'm not necessarily listening to the meeting. Uh, but I did do some research, uh, and this is a part of why I took the position that I took as it related to being an advocate for the city of Harvey, or advocating this city of Harvey, and in actuality, supporting this administration. I was also told, uh, a little while ago, that there were comments made about me. This is my thing. Why am I being discussed in a special meeting that is concerning the city of Harvey? I don't even know what those comments are, but this is the kind of stuff that I am talking about as it relates to people claiming to be victims of my unrelenting pursuit of assault, slander, defamation, or whatever. And the truth of the matter is, is that I'm the one that they seemingly came, for whatever reason, get off of their minds. And so, I don't even know what those comments were. It's unfortunate. Uh, give me a second, why is it doing that? Okay, um, it's unfortunate that this would be a moment where, you know, this should be, it, you know, I, I, I just don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I just, I just truly think that it is fascinating, and it is extremely unfortunate. I don't know what those comments were. I do care to hear them, because again, this is not a moment for these types of things. As a matter of fact, if I'm not, if I'm getting it wrong, if I'm, I'm listening to a hot mic. Where's the hot, you know what, let me go to it, because I know where the hot mic would be at.
Since, uh, in Hawaii, or Harvey? Yeah, the Thunder Party, yeah. Now, I'm totally, this is an award, uh, uh, yes. Usually we have a team, we make a team, uh, and to.
Okay, we're gonna get started in one minute, please.
She did this thing, she did this. She did not, well, actually, I knew them, but I'm tired, well, for the staff, and most, yeah, she just paid the figures, uh, to be a senior, her, her city, uh, she did have a party, she was a party. She was right at the door, the property manager was cutting this. Maybe she probably would never do any of the things that, you know, she did. And they can't party, like, like, or something.
All right, I don't see anything at the moment worth listening to. I don't even know where the hot mic is, uh, that was being alluded to. I thought I did, but obviously, that's not the case. Um, I am monitoring to know when they're gonna restart. Wait a minute, I think that's what I needed to see. Bingo. Okay. Okay, I just sent down some instructions, so hopefully in a moment, we're gonna get a pan, we're gonna get a room, panned room view, um, of this crowd. Okay, so that is the media there. Cook County Sheriffs is present. Is this Saint Mark? It's a big church.
We saw what we left off in the previous administration. Of course, we come and find ourselves in the Clark administration, current administration. The current administration inherited $164 million in debt obligations. And we went through all of our course through this presentation, and there are some things that we actually didn't address. Much, uh, inherited $164 million in debt obligation. Back to that, uh, pension issue with police and fire, uh, we inherited a loss of 35% of state revenue that's now being diverted to, or I like to say, garbage, um, to fund, of course, the pensions. Of course, we inherited, inherited gross, not the financial and personnel records. And for those who can go back to May of 2019, you may recall when Ben Bradley came to the city of Harvey and took a look in the city and looked at all of the boxes that was thrown all over the place, and the records that were all over the place. I'm also going to, um, speaking on that issue, um, commend the clerk's office for doing everything that they did, along with, of course, the rest of the team, to try to get those documents, uh, in order. Um, because it was, it was a seismic, uh, piece of work and labor that needed to be done in order to do so. Um, of course, we inherited the lack of annual audits, and of course, because we didn't have the audits, we didn't have the paperwork, I just completed some of those audits. And finally, we inherited the city's reputation for, and the public perception of corruption and mismanagement. And that's where we start. Um, next slide. So where do we go from here? Next slide. Well, where does the city get its property, where does it revenue from? First, property taxes. In general, cities will get their revenue, a, a lion's share of their revenue from the property taxes. In the case of the city of Harvey, the city of Harvey collects approximately 52% of its property taxes. On average, we are losing, because of failure to pay property taxes, somewhere to 25 to 25, 25 to 27 million dollars a year that we're not collecting in property taxes. And specifically, from a commercial property tax, uh, property tax standpoint, it's about 12 million dollars. I'm not gonna go into 12 million, 217,000, 517, it's about 12 million dollars. Another way that the city gets revenue, and other cities do well, is through sales taxes. But the majority of the businesses, ninety, at least 90% of the businesses in the city of Harvey are cash-based businesses. Now, there's nothing wrong with having a cash-based business at all, but I will be honest with you, some of those cash-based businesses do not engage in the proper reporting of the cash that they receive as revenue for their businesses, and I'll give you an example. There is a business that used to be in the city of Harvey by the name of Sugar Babies. And Sugar Baby used to put down on the reporting to the state that for the whole day, for those who were not familiar with Sugar Babies, Sugar Baby was a nightclub, bar nightclub. Um, it may also call itself a grill at that particular point in time. But it put on its recording to the state of Illinois that its gross income was $25,000 for the year. Some people laughing already, but you know it's a year. $25,000. But when we look at that and looked at their liquor sales alone, the liquor sales, they had sold at approximately $483,000 worth of liquor, but it wasn't reported. Most of that stuff, cash. And it was only because the, um, the liquor commissioner and the team who worked with the liquor commissioner was able to under, uncover that, that we were able to bring that to the attention of the state. And so, many of our businesses, that are cash-based businesses, bring in the revenue, but they don't report it. So we don't get the full amount of sales taxes. We don't get, and then when it comes to state income taxes, that's another way that the city will get its revenue. State oil and fuel, fuel taxes. Those things help to patrol, to sidewalk, to take care of lights and things of that nature. That's where a city gets its revenue from. Other taxes, real estate taxes, transfer taxes, video gaming taxes, terminal push taxes, things of that nature, grants, license and permit charges, and of course miscellaneous, um, revenue that we get from cell towers, rentals, um, paid for franchise agreements and things of that nature. That's basically how a city gets its revenue. Next slide. From the property tax standpoint, we file a levy every December. A levy is filed with the county, tell the county how much money we need. This is what cities normally do. Being from the city, the school districts, township, park districts, library, community colleges, N W R D, forest preserves, things of that nature. If you ever take a look at your tax bill, you will see that the city of Harvey is only one line on your entire tax bill of how much you can tax. And there's limits on how much a local government can tax. So, this, this, this goes back to our understanding of our property taxes. And the city of Harvey cannot just arbitrarily decide that they're going to go up just any amount of money that the city would like to go up on your taxes. New cities don't have the ability to be able to do that. Now, the county exception does some things. They add together the levy amounts, because of what these needs, eventually it comes to the value of properties, and they put all that together, and I'm just gonna say, because, you know, there's been some, some concerns as far as that's concerned, um, but they come up with the amount of what they believe the property is worth, and based on that, how your property should be taxed. And property taxes generally are basically based on the market value of the property that you own. Okay, and people would, people would expensive, I'm sorry, laughing, this way. People with expensive properties pay more, and less expensive properties pay less. I probably have to disagree with that, but sometimes, you know, that's the way that it's supposed to work. Um, next slide. But the largest amount that we had, and the largest amount that most municipalities receive, uh, in revenue, is from property taxes. So, here are our challenges. One, compared to surrounding communities, Harvey has skewed commercial, retail, and industrial properties to contribute to our tax tax. As a result, the larger tax burden falls on who? The Harvey residents. And the Harvey residents have for decades, I'm gonna repeat, for decades, been floating this boat in the city of Harvey to make sure that we could even exist. So to all of the residents in the city, that our homeowners can pay those taxes, we thank you very much for doing so. But because of the previous administration, the city of Harvey's residents are taxed at one of the top three highest rates of all municipalities to carry. So we're taxed high. 52%, as I said, of the city's residents, and of course, the commercial properties, do not pay your property taxes, so we lose that revenue, and many of the city's businesses, of course, don't pay. As of 2021, those businesses, those commercial properties go, and I've said it so much, it almost became a song. $12,217,517 in unpaid taxes. That is one year. Some of those businesses have not paid taxes for 20 years. And if we go back, and I'm not gonna, uh, ask the person operating the slides to do so, but the very first thing that we do is the vast majority of the revenue that a municipality gets is from property taxes. And this is what we have. Next slide, please. Um, the Cook County reassess, of course, that's what I said, um, property values, and many residents, because of the property taxes, cannot afford their homes. They're taxed out of their homes. Next, next, uh, slide, please. So, what did we do? We pledged, along with this body before you, to freeze residential property taxes, even though we were facing a $150 million deficit. Now, there were some people who asked the question of, why would you do that? Why would you freeze increasing property taxes when you know that you already have $150 million in the hole? I'll tell you why. First of all, there's just a downright order of fairness. And the people in the city of Harvey have paid so much from a property. And the people in the city of Harvey have paid so much from a property tax standpoint that it's absolutely ridiculous. These are, some, some are poor, some are working poor people who have just enough month at the end of the month to try to be able to make it every single day. And when we go as a government and we decide that we're going to increase those taxes even more, what happens? We get what's called diminishing returns. People get to the point where they say, you know what? The taxes are just too high. I give up. I'm not doing it anymore. A lot of them have already done that and walked away from their homes. And when you see a lot of these abandoned properties in the city of Harvey, they weren't always that way. But some of them could not afford to stay in the homes in which they lived because the taxes were too high. And so what we wanted to do was wanted to show the people and the residents in the city of Harvey that we appreciate them, that we recognize you, that we see you. Because the same things that you go through, we go through as well, as property owners in the city. We see you. And to increase your taxes, to me, would be just as irresponsible as start claiming to be irresponsible because we owe a hundred and fifty million. We would not collect any more money because we increased the taxes. So the taxes, if we increased the taxes, that one fifty wasn't gonna go down because fewer people were gonna pay. Now, we're only one of fifteen taxing bodies that's on your tax bill. So when you go look at your tax bill the next time, when they, whenever they, their, 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 they're just gonna make their way into the mailboxes. And when they do, and you take a look at your tax bill, just remember, the city of Harvey did not increase its taxes. So if your tax bill has increased, then you need to ask yourself, who was it of those fifteen districts that increased the tax bills to make you pay more? Cause it wasn't the city of Harvey. And even though we knew that for some, you know, considered it would put us in a bad way, we, we just couldn't do it. And I'm, I'm proud when we did, I'm proud of the council members that agreed with it. Um and we decided to freeze those. Next slide. But the second installment of taxes should have been out in August, August first. But they have not sent out tax bills yet. Has anybody, at least not to me. Has anybody in your guys' Cook County property tax bill yet? Okay. I just want to make sure, maybe I was missing mine. Okay. But as a result, as a result, you have to look at it this way. With all the things that we've talked about so far, as far as money, I'm sorry. But one thing you need to realize is the city of Harvey does not have a surplus. Remember, I said a hundred and sixty-five million dollars worth of debt. The city of Harvey does not have a cushion. The city of Harvey does not have a soft place to land. When we don't get those tax dollars, that is all the money that we would have had. And as a result, because the bills have not gone out, people have not paid. And because people have not paid, the city has not received the money that it was supposed to receive in September. So to put it in plain English, y'all, we've been riding on E for quite some time. And you know how you get when you ride on E and you're trying to figure out, okay, am I finally on fumes? Or when is the car going to stop? Well, the city relies on those revenues to operate, and we continue to have those expenses, even though there's no more money coming in. Next slide. So even if we received those taxes, we still remain unable to meet our operational expenses, because everybody's already been spared. Okay, and the amount that's lost by the, the defaulting property taxpayers, that twenty-five to twenty-seven million, puts us in a hole so deep that we can't even meet our other obligations. Okay, and so we've been without funding since September. And it's exacerbated everything we've had to do. Because all those things that we were talking about from the previous administration, we need to talk about all the litigation that we have to deal with. All of the judgments that we have to pay, all of the arbitrations awards that we have to um pay. We didn't, we haven't discussed stuff. All of the business and everything that we must take care of. We're not getting any of those dollars, and we're not able to pay our ventures, and we're not able to take care of our operational expenses. Um next slide. So back to the pension board and that lawsuit. We need to explain how that impacts us. I'm used to standing up, but I'm gonna try to stay seated. I'm gonna kind of, you can read what it says here, but I wanna try to kind of explain it to you. So the city of Harvey gets a grant, say for instance, for a million dollars. Okay, and it's true to state. Because the city of Harvey gets a grant for a million dollars, which is a great thing, because we need grants. I think most people would, you know, agree that we need money, we need fixed infrastructure. And so say, for instance, the city of Harvey got a million dollar grant. One of the first things that happens with that million dollar grant is the controller, the state controller, because of the pension lawsuit, takes thirty-five percent of that million dollars. You follow me? So they take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that million dollars. Now, we already have established that we don't have the operational expenses, that we don't get the, the, the property taxes, and the sales taxes, and the state income taxes, and all those other things that we're supposed to get. So when we get a million dollar grant, and then the state takes the three hundred and fifty thousand, we are now in violation of that grant. Am I right, Howard? We are now in violation of that grant. So in order for us to get out of that being in violation, we have to come up with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have to find it wherever we have to pay. Where, where are we gonna find it? Remember we talked about raw feed to the payroll? We have to raw feed the payroll to try to figure out how to come up with the money to pay that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That three hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes from where? Our operational expenses. Which is, operational expense is a short way of saying payroll, to pay the employees in the city of Harvey. And if we don't come up with that three hundred and fifty thousand, then what? We can't use the grant. We still owe the three hundred and fifty thousand. And right now, we have, what is it, Attorney General's office coming after us with seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for a fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from police. We got a grant from police. The controller took thirty-five percent, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And then the Attorney General's office is coming after us for the seventeen five. So now we have to defend ourselves. So not only do we have to pay, we have to defend ourselves, we have to pay attorneys to defend us. Because we actually already properly used that seventeen five for the purposes of the grant. It's just a vicious cycle over and over again. And this is what happens. And every time we take one step forward, we go two steps back. Every single time. Somebody's out there saying three steps back. Next slide. So because of that, in addition to taking the thirty-five percent of state funds, of M S T funds, and taking district funds, and taking every type of fund there is, and taking our funds from E P A. For those who are familiar with um what's called land service lines, they don't have the service lines in the city of Harvey. The city of Harvey was established in eighteen ninety-one. So they have land service lines in the city of Harvey. And we were trying to get money for those lines, the micro-ramp. And what the controller do? Took the money. Not only did the controller take the money on behalf of the pensions, and like I said, this, this is the project. But then the E P A wrote us a letter saying that they weren't going to give us any more grant funds because our money is taken by the state controller. So that means while Linnwood, Hall, Flossmore, Natson, University Park, Olympic Field, that's why uh Oldham Park, Tilly Park, and Cozen, and everybody else gets to drink land-free water, we get to get stuck with land water. Because we can't get the money, because our money is being taken by the controller due to something that happened many years ago. Many years ago, under another administration. And we have to continually try to figure out a way to find our way. Next, next slide. Same thing with the fire pension litigation. I'm not going to belabor this. Same thing with the fire pension litigation. Same thing happened. Next slide. And we're gonna, I think I've made my point. Maybe I haven't. But I think I have, because as far as sales tax, we have the same issue. This money continues to be taken. Next slide. State income tax, same thing. Next slide. Our motor fuel tax. Some people ask, why don't we fix the streets? Why don't we take care of those things? What about potholes and things of that nature? That money is being taken through the fire and the police agents. And I just have to just also note, because I've been here in the city for so long, and I'm looking at some of our wonderful residents, and some of y'all are even by the city's city. That helps to fund this motor fuel tax. So we can repair those. Next uh slide. The Rivers Casino revenue. We would get about, what'd you say, one point two million from uh Rivers, one point four? One point four million from Rivers Casino. But since Winfrey gets here now, there's been legislation put in place so that we don't get the one point four anymore. That instead of receiving the money from Rivers Casino, we won't get that money anymore. And instead, and this is only in fact the city of Harvey, it affects a lot of the other Southland communities. The city of Harvey would only receive approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. So we go from getting one point four at Rivers to eight hundred thousand from Winfrey. They just took the money. And that's some stuff that happened down in state. So if you got problems with that, you gotta talk to those people. Next uh or slide. Same thing with grants. And I've already talked to you about the grants. Next slide. Other revenue sources, same thing. So we know the money isn't there. We know that money disappeared. We know that people weren't charged. We know that money wasn't paid. We know that there's been litigation. When all these things have happened, but what does the city of Harvey need? Well, the city of Harvey needs roughly fifty-one million annually to pay its operational needs. Fifty-one million. And it's not a one person, though. I see some employees in the audience. There's not one person who works for the city of Harvey that makes the same or more than what their counterpart would make in the village in the city of Harvey. Our employees are understaffed, they're underpaid. Okay, and we need approximately fifty-one million annually to pay for our operations. We receive about thirty million, so we shy towards the end. Too much money to get the money. And now, in addition to receiving approximately thirty million per year, we're also, would you go to the next slide, please? We also um are receiving thirty-five percent less because of those fire and, and police agents. Now, I gotta say it again, because someone's going to misconstrue what I'm saying. So I wanna make sure that it's clear, because I've said it before. This is not a reflection of my police department. It's not a reflection on our fire department. And when I call it a pyramid scheme, it was a pyramid scheme that the previous administration was involved in. To basically use that money to have the front end from people who were actually paying active members. So I wanna make sure that we understand it, because once again, sometimes, you know, I do as well, get my feelings every now and then. And uh, and as they say, you feel some type of way. I don't want any of, our first response feeling that way at all because of the work they did. But because we only collect about thirty million dollars, and then thirty-five percent of that is gone, we tried to keep this city operating for the past six years. And we tried every creative way that we could to try to make sure that this city had streets like straight sidewalks, that we had police and fire protection, that we had garbage picked up, refuse picked up every week, and that we weren't on the news. We worked opportunities off to try to do something. That's exactly what we did. We didn't increase tax taxes because we knew that our residents could not afford it. And we didn't have the ability to qualify for another bond to pay for any of these expenses the way a normal municipality would be. To next slide. So of course, we have additional challenges. Nobody sees the city's entire financial situation. The Illinois law has no provision for municipal bankruptcy. Cause there's some who say, well, why don't you just do it Detroit way? You know, Detroit's on the menu. So why don't you do what they did? There is no um provision for things called rural municipalities to engage in bankruptcy. And while we want to pay all of our bills, there is no mechanism for municipality to consolidate its debt. It was like chapter thirteen or something like that. There's no ability for us to do that. So we basically just paid it up, and we have officially run out. Next slide. When the city took down employees or restructured departments, the unions have challenged our activists at every moment. And the arbitrators who were either aware, unaware of what we're going through, or maybe they just didn't believe our financial challenges have issued additional awards. So this is how this works. We'll have a, we'll get an arbitration award from the arbitrator. We can't pay the arbitration award. So then the unions will go file another unfair labor practice and go into arbitration. To tie us to get, to get us to pay the thing that we can't pay. Okay, and then when we can't pay it, and we can demonstrate that we can't pay it, then the arbitrator issues another award for us not paying the award that we were supposed to pay. And now we gotta try to pay that award, an additional award we were supposed to pay, and they want a hundred percent? And they want a additional six percent as well. Even though we like the revenue to pay, and we can do so, and you know what the arbitrator said? Well, we should be able to pay these things because the other municipalities around us can pay them. That, that's like you being a doctor, and unfortunately, our school teachers don't make enough money, and me being a school teacher. And the expectation is, I'm supposed to pay the same amount of taxes they keep paying because we live in the same neighborhood. No, doesn't make any sense. But the way the arbitrator look at it, it does. And it continues to put the city of Harvey in a deeper hole. Next, next slide. Same thing with these lawsuits and our workers' compensation cases. We've tied cases, we've won, and we've settled cases, but we have to pay off these judgments. Approximately ninety percent. Approximately ninety percent, even from what I recall, approximately ninety percent of those cases are cases from the previous administration. We got cases going back as far as two thousand seven. Two thousand seven. That were never either settled, negotiated, or whatever. But the judges and arbitrators look at a single case and they don't consider that Harvey cannot immediately pay off its expenses. And it seems to me, honestly, as this is probably, that they don't care. And so we've tried to negotiate something, to know their. We've tried to get the opportunity to pay off our judgments a little bit longer over time. To know their, of course, everybody wants their money. I love telling the, the, what I call the sergeant story. Okay, uh, I, I, I'm not your sergeant, no, I love you, but I, I gotta come for you for a second. Because we wanted to get new cars. For the city. Because when I came into the city, you could see through the floorboard of each and every, uh, police vehicle. It was like using a Flintstone, and you would pedal with your feet to try to get the car going. And we were trying to get new cars, but we also had to pay back pay to our sergeants, and the sergeants were supposed to get it. But the question was asked. About us getting the vehicles or paying everything we need. And they wanted their money. Even though the cars would have put them in a better position. To be able to do the jobs that they were doing. Now, I'm not, I'm not, as they say, hit on somebody because they wanna get the cheese. But at the same time, if we're doing this together, you have a totally different respect, next. Oh, yeah, that was one. Yeah, that, that's the last one, if we can go pedal that. Get some cake with that. Well, oh, yeah, there we go. Yeah, I, we also tried to file that petition to allow us to pay off our judgments over time. Over a longer period of time, but that failed because of pushback from the trial lawyers, law clients. Okay? So everybody's protecting their interest, everybody's taking care of themselves, and while they're taking care of themselves, the city of Harvey continues to go down. And that's one of the main parts of this story. It's not just about what happened in previous administration. It's about a lot of people sat and watched those things happen, and you asked them, who'd be dying? People who we relied on to do something. And it did nothing, next slide. So we had several successes, of course. We have finally sealed a deal on any litigation over by default. We got ourselves out of the Securities and Exchange Commission's, uh, investigation, um, and that complaint was dismissed. Uh, we took care of that, next slide. We have, of course, brought in, of course, some economic development, uh, most, uh, recently, Harvey Lox, uh, which has been extremely successful. And it's a twenty million dollar investment, uh, by Pivotal, next slide. We're also overhead, we're over, um, calling Metro and Pace. They have received money on behalf of the city of Harvey. So those who think that for some odd reason, that when we, when you see these these initiatives taking place, and you see the construction or whatever it is. You don't have to worry, the money goes, you wanna worry, you don't have to worry, the money don't come past my desk. The money don't even, I don't even see what it looks like, I don't get to sniff it. That money goes straight from wherever the grant needed, straight to the people doing the work. But that kinda happens when you have a hotel deal, where you're supposed to build a hotel, and all the money is fees. Now, they don't, it doesn't make a difference that you have a new administration. And that you have new people working in that administration, and that your, uh, mayor is attorney, they don't care. They're making sure that bottom line is out of dust money either, so I don't have to wear that on intel for those who would like to see me. Because the simple fact is, the money goes straight from the grant, straight to the, the people performing the work. And we have to provide documentation on all of it, ain't that right, uh, little switch? Next, uh, slide, please. So of course, we know that the city of Harvey is desirable, patient, we have all these businesses, we have good locations, we have all the rentals, we have all of the expressways, we have all of those things, but there are some other things that are hindering us. We can't, we can't seize property, so when you see some of the property that needs to be redeveloped, we can't seize that property, because we don't have the money to seize it. Somebody the other day talking about the fact that I loaned the city of Harvey twenty five thousand dollars of my own personal money. We don't have the money to actually seize those properties. So when you have an abandoned property, say for instance, on your block. Okay? As, as Harvey do as well. And you have that abandoned property on your block. It may be owned by a private party. Not owned by the city. The city could attempt to try to seize that property, take over that property, and try to put that property back on the tax rates. But in order for us to be able to seize the property. We have to have the finances to be able to do something. To be able to court, to be able to pay fees, to be able to do everything that needs to be done, to be able to pay the mortgage. If the property needs to be torn down, we have to have the money in order to tear it down. And we don't have the finances to do something. As the media. If we had the resources to tear down all of the properties that needed to be torn down, we would tear them down. If we had the resources to fix all the streets the way they needed to be fixed, we would fix them. The reason why it's not done is because we don't have the revenue to be able to do something. And that's what happens, you guys all right? I understand, yeah. You know, we, you know, while we're on tour, we're gonna pray this guy will pray our brother Tyrell will back to us, because man, come on now. Mm-hmm. Thank you, it was a great if y'all saw how baby that his brother was. But he was still talking all the time, like, he was just the host. So, we don't have the resources to be able to do something. If we had the resources to be able to do so, but you don't have to believe him, but I'm gonna tell you, those things would be done. Absolutely. So much so, that yes, I did loan the city twenty five thousand dollars of my own money. Money that I earned. To tear down a house here in the city. And I did that because the city of Harvey did not have the money to be able to do so. We don't have, just unfortunately, somebody else will, I don't have a problem with it, we don't have what all the other municipalities have. And that's what we're trying to get to, that's what we need to get to, and, um, and hopefully, we can get to next slide. Um, yeah, we've had, as you are in, Oak County has assisted with every structure needs, next slide. We don't have a, 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 a lot of bankruptcy, next slide. And so current House Bill four zero two four, everyone, pay attention here, for those who are drafted drifting off a little bit, pay attention. House Bill four zero two four is current opinion in the veto section, which would provide thirty million dollars in relief. To the city of Harvey to continue operating under other, uh, until other revenue sources kick in. Because we still got a lot of work to do. We've also drafted legislation that prohibits the comptroller from being able to seize the restricted funds. Because remember, once again, I went on Fox News and I said, Fox Business, and I said that the pensions should be paid, I still believe that. But I don't believe that the restricted funds should be used in order to pay. Because to me, that's just a, 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 a misappropriation of the intent of what those funds were supposed to be. So we've also drafted that legislation, um, to be able to do so. And that brings us to where we are now. The financially distressed city law. So there's gonna be, uh, and first of all, before we get into this, but this, we're in the wrap-up stage now again. Before we get there. I wanna thank everybody who took this time to listen and taking this journey with us. Um, it's important that we do so, because in a city such as the city of Harvey, some people have been in there here for their entire lives. And some just moved here a year, two years ago. And don't understand quite where we were, where we came from, and what we're experiencing now. So I appreciate you taking, uh, that journey, uh, uh, to this point, next slide. Financially distressed city law, we're just asking for one thing. For the council to take action under the financially distressed city law. The purpose of the law is to provide secure financial basis for the continued operation of a financially distressed city. Which is what I'm hoping at this particular point in time, that the city of Harvey will be declared. But we have to do this in steps. And this is where the experts are gonna come out. But they can do all their talking head stuff later. Counsel, we're only asking for one thing. The first step is to have the council pass an ordinance. Requesting that the Department of Revenue certify the city of Harvey. As a, um, to say that we qualify to become, qualify to become a financially distressed city. Now, what does that basically mean, what's the criteria? The criteria in, in basically is that we have, we're in top five percent of high tax rates, where they we're in the, the lower five percent of tax collections, if I mean, we're there. But the, but the numbers are the thing that's going to tell us really where we are. And that is by having the Department of Revenue to take a look at our current condition. And to make sure, or to verify, that we make, that we meet that criteria. That is the only thing that we are asking for at this particular time. There are other parts to it, there are other things that would have to be done in the future. We're not asking for this at this particular time, because if we don't qualify for part A. We, we can't go to part B anyway. Okay? So we're asking for, um, the council to vote in favor of this, ultimately, it would pave the way for us to seek additional relief. Which would include the appointment for some people who want to have it. For those who would love to have it, and I love it, and oversight, financial oversight authority. To be able to come in and go over our finances and check them out, and make sure everything is doing what it's supposed to do. Because unless we get a reset here. Okay, which is one of the things that this administration, we were trying to figure out a way to keep the boat afloat without having to go this this route. There are some people in this, in this audience that were members of the R V Coalition. I'm gonna invoke some things, Mr. Nun. Mr. Mahone. Two people that used to advocate for this thing here. And at one point or another, during the time that they were in their lives, God rest their souls, we discussed this financially distressed city law. But if we didn't have to go in that direction, we wanted to try to avoid it. Not want to give some credit to this administration, and specifically all the elected officials that have participated in trying to keep us afloat during that period of time. But we're now at a point where we have to make a decision on where we're gonna be. And for those who would like to see the financial oversight, because even though we present the, the bills every two weeks. And even though the finance committee goes, uh, over the bills, and even though they're passed by the council. Some people say it's still not transparent enough. You will have a financial authority to be able to do something. And your mayor got the chair away from it, your mayor welcomes it. We welcome it. Next slide. After we do that, though, because the city of Harvey lacks the ability to pay operational expenses. I also wanna exercise my powers over the city code. To allow me coordinate activities in, in case of an emergency resulting from other causes. Which means we are going to have to have some changes in our operation until we can figure out how to do more, and how to do better. Some people want to call it a shutdown, I don't call it a shutdown. Because we're not just walking away from the city, but we are going to have to change the way that we operate. Because we cannot afford to pay all of the people that work for the city. We cannot afford to pay all of the bills that we need to pay. We cannot afford to pay all of the visitors that we need to pay. And just as the city shut down and operated with skeleton crews during COVID nineteen. We are going to have to restructure the way we operate now, to make sure that we can afford to pay the people who work here every single day, now. We are going to have the necessary conversations with the necessary collective, collective bargaining bodies. We are going to follow all the rules that we are supposed to follow, but we definitely don't want them following any more unfair labor practices. Because that's just gonna cost us more money anyway. So we don't want them to do that. We're going to try to take care of as many people as we possibly can in this administration. But it would be irresponsible of us to think that we can continue to operate the city the way that we do. When we know, and you have historic in seeing that we don't have the revenues coming in to our city the way that we need them. And we don't have the ability to bond ourselves out of it. So, um, next slide, please. So, we will be able to temporarily resume operations. And we want every, and before we get there, we want everybody that I discussed, the pensions. The, both police and fire. The arbitrators, the, um, the unions. The, the vendors. The, the federal government, the state government, county government, we want everybody to come to the table. Because I never said that I was the smartest man in the world. And so at the end of the day, if there's someone out here that has a better idea, that can show us how to get it done, I'm with you. I always talk about it Barack Obama ran for, uh, 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 mayor of the city of Harvey, I'd go to him instead. Just because he could go ahead and possibly, possibly give us more of what we need. But if the state comptroller stops seizing our restricted funds, it would free up additional revenue. For the use of bill, and those bills actually came on time, and people paid on time, that would give us additional revenue. If the fire pension, because the police pension, I believe is already being paid, is this, is that correct, uh? If the fire pension would renegotiate. You know, we never said we're going to go from thirty five percent to zero percent, I don't believe that's right either. But we need to sit at the table and figure out how we're gonna do this, because at the end of the day, if there is a city, there is a pension. But we need to sit at the table and figure out how we're going to do this, because at the end of the day, if there isn't a city, there isn't a pension. So if the fire pension would be willing to renegotiate our full repayment of pension over a longer period of time at a lower percentage, that would help us. Okay, and the legal fees, because we also pay legal fees for them, is that correct? And we've paid their, I think somewhere around how much, how much we pay uh two million? We've paid their attorney about two million dollars so far. So if we need to sit down and have a conversation. Our biggest problem now, I think, is the fact that all of these agencies are operating in their own silos, looking at their own interests. And I'm not saying that they're not supposed to protect themselves or protect the people that they represent. You know, but as they're saying, that one of the arguments unnecessarily likely here, what you cut in your nose, despite your face. And that's exactly what happened in this particular case. Next slide. If the general city or the county weren't able to give us the ability to foreclose on tax delinquent properties, because we don't have the ability to do that. This is a funny, we rely on property taxes, taxes that are collected by someone else. We don't have the ability to collect those taxes. But at the same time, they're not aggressively collecting those taxes on hours that happen. I believe that any city in the United States of America, but specifically, you know, can have a fifty-two percent collection rate. And there's no one running out there trying to get the rest of their money. You try owing your Capital One credit card an extra five cents and see somebody going to be calling you on the phone talking about, if this Mr. is a rich thief. Now, but when we collect fifty-two percent, nobody's going to think, we're just allowed to exist this way. Is it that we don't deserve to have the phone now? Or what's going on? So if we can get the general city or county to give us authority to foreclose on those tax-related properties and taxes, it would give us the ability to put those properties back in the tax roll. You know, and we are of course open to any other ideas. So I think that's it. But once again, thank you so much for listening. And so now at this particular point in time, you want to follow the follow the rule and you guys uh counsel decide what you want to do. Um. Excuse me. Uh-uh, no, 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 no. And it's disingenuous for you to stand up in the middle of the meeting out of order. Thank you very much.
Wow.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Uh point of order.
Okay, we have a motion to limit automatic comment to three minutes. Is there a second?
Point of order.
There's a motion and a second. Okay, well, there is a point of order, because there is nothing that is out of order. Um we have a motion by the
Point of order.
We really did to have a point of order.
Yes.
We, that's that's in power, and you are out of order.
I'm always out of order.
Yes, so there is a motion by the by the fifth and a second by the sixth to limit automatic comment to, we are going to have it, to three minutes. Is that correct?
For the past hour and thirty minutes.
Right.
Would you please come to order?
I'm hopeful, no clue.
Other person, there's no arresting for anything for me speaking up on behalf of the residents.
Uh would you call the romantic?
Other person, Ruiz.
That's the plural, we can't word all of them.
Other person, Chapman.
Absolutely.
No. Other person, Smith.
Yes.
Other person, Keith. Other person, Randall. Other person, Rogers. Motion, Carrie.
Motion, Carrie, okay. So what we will do is um we will start with, he's the second lawyer. There's something to be said, so um.
Could we start in the court of order? Could we start in the court of order?
No, we can start where the chair says that we're going to start. We have something to say. Please set the clock to three minutes.
Residents, I want you to pay close attention. Why would we be hindering any and/or specific debate or conversation around something that's going to have an everlasting impact on us for who knows how long? Tonight, you didn't hear anything more than what you already knew via Google search when you type in Eric Kimmel. What you heard tonight was a blame game. And what we need are specific measurable, you know, you ever seen the smart? We need that, a smart chart. Specific measurable, realistic, timely goals. That's not being said here. We're not having any understanding. Why would I be limited to three minutes, but the mayor's been speaking for ninety minutes? Did you know the day that one point four billion dollars dropped in our bank account on behalf of Alregui Bank? Right, that's to support the twenty-five plus residents, because it's pretty fine. I'm part of it. All employees in here, you all right here, and then the back, very few residents, but certainly employees. And that is supposed to support you all being able to work. Where is that? That's what should be up on this screen, the bank accounts. Not a slideshow depiction of what we knew happened in the previous administration. At some point in time, we have to step up and have courage enough to say what we're going to do to move the city forward. When you spent thirty-two thousand dollars, I know grant funding. I've never been granted access to any of those documents to identify that the grant funding was specific specifically allocated to anything. Why why would we be having, I I mean, even this, I I messaged Ms. Gonzalez, just forty-eight hours ago, I found out about this. Why, as an other person, and I find it out, forty-eight hours, not, it can't even be a forty-eight hour true uh posting, because we found out at one forty, via Facebook, one forty-six in my inbox. Why wasn't it sent to me on Wednesday? If we are truly having a financial uproar, why did we spend over thirty-two thousand like Ms. Askew mentioned uh just Sunday? When not even ten percent of the residents attended, not even ten percent of the residents attended back in the Fourth of July parade. So there it is, almost eighty thousand dollars on special events. I think we can act, just like we're going to ask downstate, the House of Representatives to push us through for the thirty year. We couldn't have asked them to support us in pivoting those funds to go to your streets, to go to the street lights, to go to abandoned properties.
Thirty seconds?
It's unfortunate and to be muzzled. You know, Mayor Clark, I'm calling for your immediate resignation. And I'm calling for your immediate resignation because this is insanity. We're not doing anything, we're doing the same thing, and we're getting the same results. Taxpayers, you paid almost thirty thousand dollars on basic charges on the rest of me and my mother. But I'm sitting here today, free as a bird. So with that being said, the way in which, I just told you three line items over a hundred thousand dollars. The past six months, you paid four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be in that construction code. Yet we've seen no engineer in gray rooms. And now my time is up. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
First of all, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Tanger. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. What are we talking about here? We are talking about an ordinance to request certification and designating our city as a financial distress city, none of it, anything else.
Thank you.
We're talking about the beginning steps. Now, some people may say, well, we know our history. Well, let me tell you something. You know it, you're going to hear it, so we don't repeat it. How many times we were in school, we heard about our history. We cannot just close the door to it. We have to face it, to move over, move over, and accept it to avoid ever repeating it again. This is what this purpose is. This is the purpose for us to sit back and say, do we collectively say, wait a minute, I'm paying the highest taxes here? Do I want a record of that? Darn right I do as a resident. Do I want a record that my community is the lowest collecting base? Darn right I want a record of that. That's going to help each and every one of us in our city to move forward. Nothing else, nothing more, nothing less. That's what we're voting on today. All this other stuff that we're talking about, this is what's on the agenda. This is what's on the agenda. So my question is, that's all we're voting on, correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
We are not voting uh voting on having an authority to come here and oversight our uh our expenses yet. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor?
We're saying yeah, don't you get that?
We are not voting on that today. We are voting just the beginning steps to say, hey, world, hey, world, city of Harvey is on the top three percent of the taxes. Wake up all the other taxes, everybody.
And why does she?
We're saying, hey, world.
Her being arrested.
We got a three percent.
I don't like that lady. She don't
We have a problem here. Somebody come help us. We're repeating our history.
Like getting the money, you
Reaching our ends. We need help in the city of Harvey.
I like that. That's true. True fact. Now look at the amount of tax. Somebody went back to your bank. You're there to put out the word that y'all need help.
Anything to say? Yeah, I got a little something to say. Thank you. Thank you, everybody for coming out. I'd first like to start off with a simple fact that um when I ran for alderman, I knew that we was a hundred, over a hundred million dollars a day. I knew we had five thousand vacant properties, but I didn't run my campaign on that. I ran my campaign on what I can do and how I can see the city moving forward and how I can be able to help. So when we constantly play the blame game, but this happened before this, people don't talk like that around election time when they're trying to get some vote. Well, it's the cause of this, it's the cause of this. See, people don't want to take accountability. You know, when you take accountability, there's no room for blame. You know, period. So once we stopped talking about what happened, whatever Kellogg's supposed to be it, he inherited from Nick Graves. Whatever Nick Graves inherited, he inherited from Johnson. Whatever Johnson had, it came from Mayor Haines. As far as I see, Mayor Haines ain't ain't did nothing, have you? Okay, so that's what we want to do, we want to play the situation. The thing about it is this. We need to worry about what are we doing right now? When the mayor uses an example, if I'm paying fifty thousand dollars and I got a loan for a car, I didn't buy the car. If I did something like this, somebody could be making my life miserable if I got away with fifty thousand dollars. You know, how does how does how does how does those situations, you know, even happen? Um where's the record of this actually happening and showing that it did? And this person is still walking around doing this to everybody, you know, we we need to stop. Okay, I was on the finance committee alone with Kobe Chapman. Monday, um April, um no, um April twelfth, February twelfth, we were removed from the finance committee for asking too many questions about where our money is stolen. But yet, the mayor just said it himself, he named the people, they stood up and they protested. Then nobody get put out no meeting, then nobody go to jail. Okay, so what are we we supposed to do? What type of example are we setting for people that stand on up? You know, we need to change that narrative in our community. It's either poor leadership, lack of transparency from the finance department, both or neither.
You know and
Make the decision. But this all has to stop. Because we need to stop, since we had took over this administration, the unnecessary fees we've incurred, the lawsuits we've incurred, the people we had laid on offer, didn't lay off nobody from City Hall, but we laid off our street workers and our police department. If we're going to keep it real, let's keep it real and stop blaming people.
So tell us what to do.
Accountability is accountability with no room for blame when you stand up for what you know you did and what you're responsible for.
How you going to get the money, Aldi? That's what he's telling y'all to do. Don't, oh my God, the level of incompetence in these, they think they saying something. They're literally there to do something about it. Their vote is to say we're in distress. That was actually a humble move for a person.
Hey, the microphone on, can y'all hear me?
They are
All right, y'all know me, this is I just got the great sex award. First of all, giving honor to God, who is ahead of my life. I'm glad to be in the sanctuary.
Come on, James Brown, now get it out, because now first
September nineteen, I was in a terrible motorcycle accident where I almost lost my life. Staples in my head, stitches in my butt, rod in my leg and everything. But I'm here to talk about it. Now, I didn't call to talk about what I've been through, because God has already healed me, okay? One of my boys that come by my house every day at one o'clock, and he put his index finger on my chest, his name is Jesus Christ. He have already saved me. Now, I'm here for one purpose. And I wasn't going to make it here tonight, because I was full of medication and I wasn't in the mood to come out for no nonsense. But I am so glad that our illustrious mayor had the opportunity to say what was on his mind, and if he took um an hour and thirty minutes, an hour and sixty minutes, or an hour and ninety minutes, it wasn't enough time to know what this city is going through. I'm a resident on a on a hundred and forty-six and Harvey Avenue for fifty-one years. No, I ain't no wildcat. I went to Parker in Chicago. I ain't no wildcat, but I was nineteen years old, and God blessed me to have seventy years, three score and ten. Okay, seventy years. He blessed me with that. And every Monday morning, I get phone calls and they ring off the hook. They say, hey, the garbage man didn't come. Well, don't worry, give me a minute. I'll call Republic and they coming. Okay, do you know what it's like not to have your garbage being able to be picked up? Do you know that I speak with Mr. Lewis Williams, just like we family members? I talk to him every day, all day, all the time, and he sets me straight as chairman of the finance committee on where we should be going as far as the city. I'm surprised, it was April seventh, twenty nineteen, when we took office. April seventh, twenty nineteen. And we've been juggling, like, goes over the circus for six years. And I'm wondering, how are we making payroll? How is the water department? How is the street department? Plant department? Hell, yeah, you you needed to bring being that thin, because we didn't have qualified, certified people that was able to come to your house and come to your property, okay? Now we're getting results. Is it enough? No. Hell, yeah, I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for stage one, because it's the best thing, and I want to see my my city continue to flourish. Thank you, uh aldermen. I'm going down the line now. Third ward.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Your participation.
Thank you, my friend. Something happened to them.
Good evening. Um I first want to start off by saying how it's very important for us to attend these meetings. So you all can see the fullery, not only here, and all the other entities like the Park District, which you pay taxes for too as well, and the library, okay? Transparency, since I've been alderperson, I haven't heard that word, so if I had uh some amount of money for the word transparency that's been used in here on this board, I probably rich, because it's used overkill. It's like a bad horse. At least we say we live in here, that we have financial oversight. Wow, we finally got that wish we've been asking for. That's financial oversight means transparency, correct? Means transparency, right? And so after that, not only that, he explained it was a ten percent surplus with grades. I mean, we had money in the bank. We had money in the bank. That's what surplus mean. He had some money. But it's after the last administration, who we have seen we've been blaming. But you know, when we talk about that, you know what's really interesting? Everybody sat around, but it's whole sixteen years and watched us. Let somebody dig us a ground. Settle around quietly with both ass
And she with him now.
And let's talk about it. And we still know, you know, with the talking of time, if that person still got a hold on the city, you can tell by
Come on!
I have to say, all right, everybody coming here, and you tried to tear down the city, the best we trying to pull it together.
And she with
They still in place.
And Oh, it would tell all now. And oh, it would tell all now. And talking with Kellogg now.
We supposed to be working together. It's embarrassing. I can say it enough how embarrassing it is as a family, like poor community, that we have our own can that pulls us down the ground like a bear crabs. But we so educated. That makes no sense to me. That makes no sense to me. These same introverted people. Why, where were you?
The rest of Thornton Township is with Kellogg.
Where were you with Kellogg? Where were you? Where were you? Where were you? Yeah, and they, when we talk about their acceptance, they say they been going to school and somebody gives them a presentation where my third grader can understand it and they still don't understand themselves. And they want to be mayor. Good luck with that, people, okay? Have a great night.
Thank you. And that's about least fifth ward.
Welcome, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, the residents and partners here.
Please, let's, let's still remain in order. No worries, please, thank you.
We're done during my time. So four minutes back in the clock, please.
Um, no, that's.
Now, seriously, thank you all for being here. Uh, look, I probably shouldn't be surprised, but I am. But I'm also just tired. I really am. We had a young lady who got up there and she said, look, I want to know where we at, how did we get there and what we gonna do to get out of it? That's what the man did.
He did. There's a plot that I saw. It made.
He did. It's like, I'm the only one with ears in here? He showed it to you.
He just did.
But that's not blaming somebody.
And if she vote against distress.
It's not blaming her.
I'm gonna really.
I tell you, I gotta get more oil changes and do more engine work because the previous owner didn't take care of the engine. I'm not blaming her, I'm telling you the situation.
It's time for her foul to come out.
We gotta roll up.
Because she.
I've seen this. You mean to tell me every single city council meeting, you get up and you say the same thing over and over?
Don't talk about her, talk about the.
The same thing over and over.
Come on, y'all.
Even after you've been provided with the answer.
Oh, up, down.
Stop talking while I'm talking. It's being rude, sir. It's rude. This is what I'm talking about, y'all.
Let us, please. Please. Continue.
This is what I'm talking about. We just old things. The doggone, even asking for all this transparency, you gonna look at the books? You gonna, we got somebody from the government, turn around and gonna look at them for you.
That's not what they want.
Watch this, it ain't gonna be good enough.
Come on, you know.
It's not gonna be good enough. Hmm, they probably working with y'all. People ain't working with us.
That's what they gonna say.
That's, we can respect each other, have a decent conversation. When our elders is sitting up here and can't follow the rules. Gosh, it don't have to be this difficult. We can actually work together. But the problem is, and I figured it out, some of y'all don't want that. You want to tear it down because you want somebody else to figure it out. You got another agenda. You got another agenda. Well, let me tell you something right here in the humps of God. Your agenda doesn't matter. God does. So we gonna keep moving? I hope. I hope and pray for you. I hope that he can deal with your attitude, deal with your heart, deal with your mind.
Talk about transparency.
And all you have to say is negative stuff out of your mouth.
Who?
Please, hold on. Are you done?
No worries, yeah, I'm, I'm done. I'm about to leave this thing out.
All right, um, point of law, let's just go along. All of them, Jersey, with Senator U, I saw your hair raised up on your head. I never saw that before. Like that. You know, unfortunately, we still have some Caligarians out there who, uh, seem for some odd reason, no matter what you do, if you, if you speak that man's name in a, in a way that they don't like, they got a problem with it. You know, I remember seeing Barack Obama on television when he was talking about President Trump. And he was saying, now, what if I did the same thing he did? If I did the same thing that had been done between two thousand three and two thousand nineteen, people wouldn't be trying to burn me at the state? And they would definitely be, wouldn't be calling for my immediate resignation now. They would have called for my immediate resignation then. They would have also called for me to be locked up. But that stuff didn't happen because the Caligarians were leaving, supporting somebody who ran the city into the ground. Mayor. When Shirley Duwinski, when we protested, Joe Whittington, when we protested, we were removed from office. And we were illegally removed from the office. And fortunately, um, the state's attorney, the attorney general, they got involved and restored. So we were removed from office when we spoke out against what was going on at that particular point in time. That has not happened in this administration, even though there have been people who have acted in a way such as police officers and things of that nature. They still weren't removed from their position. This is not election time. This election time for some other people, okay, who are running for office. But I'm not running for office right now and neither is the council. So you can keep that one because we're not running for office. There is no place in the United States of America, other than the city of Harvey, that has had its police department raided twice by the federal government and once by the state. There is no place other than St. Louis that has the pension funds being intercepted by the state control. And it's had to deal with becoming a financially distressed city. These are unprecedented times. When you talk about policing gentleman's clubs and providing police protection for drug dealers, those are unprecedented times. When you talk about the planning, the target being raided by the federal government, those are unprecedented times. And the list goes on and on and on.
Come on, tell me.
So we're not talking about just what normally happens in normal situations. We are talking about situations that some of us as the elders say, I never thought I'd see that in my life. Never. Because these are unprecedented times. And so we have to take action. Now, I always say it over and over again, from place up in here, y'all do what y'all need to do. I'm all right with that. I'm all right with you. Just like I respected the mirror before me and did not say and do a lot of things that I could have done. If I'm no longer in this office and we have a new one, I will respect that one too. Because that's how government works. That's what they were trying to demonstrate in Washington DC when they were trying to do a peaceful transfer of power. But some people seem to can't follow the rules because they want it all by themselves. You do whatever you want to do. I don't live in Harvard. See, I, I'm hardly more than right. So when this is over, we'll find something else to do. And I'm still, and I'm still gonna love, God bless you. But now we got business to take care of and we have an ordinance requesting certification and designation under the Financial Distress City laws. And the mayor will entertain, the chair will entertain, and motion will approve.
And if he gets to get your oversight, Kobe.
I already had the, uh, debate in common. So.
So weird that.
Better foot with the police on the road.
Alderperson Duwinski?
Yes.
Alderperson Chapman?
Yes.
Alderperson Smith?
Yes.
Alderperson P?
Yes.
Alderperson Randall O?
Yes.
Alderperson Rogers?
Good job, all of them.
Three, five, one, seven.
Good job, all of them. And you don't want to hear that.
Um, the chair will entertain most of the adjournments. I heard, uh, most about the sixth, talking about the fifth, all in favor, six and five about saying aye. Hold on, hold on. Before we get there, we got, we got a few things to do with this, this few national significant issues. First of all, because during my presentation, I might have been seen a little bit excuse, but y'all keep it in mind. County has helped us fix that two billion dollars for that water, uh, supply line. And the county has also helped us with that one point one B and whatever it was, to sit our bank account from the bridge line. It won't get us where we need to be. But there are some people who are willing to step forward to try to help us. And speaking of that, Pastor Eric or the leader in charge or servant in charge, wherever he say, I, he, is he up there?
There he is.
The, the shepherd up there, there you go. The shepherd up this block, we want to thank him and his team and, and all of the members for allowing us to use this space. Uh, I hope that whoever, whoever's flying across the river, come on. Sometimes we can get a little, we can get a little rowdy. But I hope that we didn't do anything to the, to the father that's a sanctuary. And I hope that, uh, eventually God will be pleased with us. All right? That, that being said, there's a motion to adjourn and there's a second. All in favor, six and five about saying aye.
Aye.
Those polls, hearing done, they stand adjourned eight twenty-eight PM. Thank you very much and. Have a good rest of your week, other weekend. Thank you.
As you all witnessed and seen with your own eyes for how long you were able to watch it, I caught the second one. But how long you were watching, what you just witnessed was the mayor of the city of Harvey making the case for the financial condition of the city, how they got there, what's the reality that they're facing, as well as options to get out of those particular spaces. He even said that if those options is a cause, or as it relates to making that a distressed city by its label, it will cause there to be a greater level of financial oversight, which he welcomed. But it also basically sends out the back signal to the government that the city is in peril and need help. It is my understanding, based on our research of the things that are going on in the city of Harvey, that they are probably months, if not weeks away from having to do mass layoffs. And as the city's mayor just made it clear, that the city is going to have to have a temporary shutdown if something is not done in the immediate sense. We have not been on live stream every day because we have been trying to figure out the realities that are, that are facing the city. I want to be very clear here. I've not had much communication with the mayor himself, but I will want everybody to know that based on everything that we have been involved in, I like Christopher Clark. As a matter of fact, I don't just like Christopher Clark, but I honor him. I think that the people who tried to get me to see him as a villain, those people who tried to see, get me to see him as corrupt and as some people tried to label him as worse than Tiffany, I think that with the devil meant for bad, God has turned it around for ultimate good. And because of my lessons that I've learned in Dalton, I took out the ample amount, proper amount of time to get a full understanding. And now, if you looked at that report, I can double down on it. How the hell would I work for a city that doesn't have any money? How could I be colluding with a mayor who doesn't have any weight or authority and is in danger of having to turn the government over to someone else? Based on our research, once we known that this was going to happen, the same time everyone else did, the mayor could have literally simply turned the city of Harvey over to state and county agencies. But instead of turning the city over, being a smart attorney, he's taken a route of giving his party, the Democrats, an opportunity to see the distress of the city and to help. How is it? And I'm gonna say this because for me, it's not about the mayor, it's about the city of Harvey. How is it that within a three-minute time span with almost, almost two hours of information, the alderman ended up turning this into something that it just simply should not have been? And I'm gonna basically say that for the record. I, as a black man, I find a little bit of shame in that, that the only person that made full sense in the moment that needed to be made was a white woman. But I thank that older woman for actually speaking to the issue and speaking to what's being said and further clarifying what needed to be said. If you paid attention to that, then you heard the echoes of what I've been trying to tell the people who are watching, investigative advocate. What's plaguing the city of Harvey is not corruption, it is not even a villain. But it is a village that have been so inundated with corruption in prior administrations that they have simply fallen out of line of compliance and they don't have the necessities needed to build a thriving community. It's not that hard. It's really not that hard. But it's made harder from people who want to take every single moment for their selfish ambition that do not have any plan, any ability, any connections. Oh, wait a minute, let me take that back. They actually do. Let's be very clear about a city now in distress. This city is actually one of the only cities that Napoleon Harris is the only senator for, who he has a business in the city. And if I'm not mistaken, supposedly lives there. And then you mean to tell me that him being the protege of the former mayor, Mr. Kellogg, who you now recently just saw inside of Thornton Township, and we've had conversations about that before, and is not just that a mentor of that senator who happens to be the Democrat commitment of the Democrats of Thornton Township where Kobe Chapman happens to be, if I'm not mistaken, one of their youth leaders and one of the forerunners of that organization. You mean to tell me, and this is what I'm gonna say, that Kobe Chapman have not flaunted or spoke about her connections to a senator who can directly, even right now, in a veto session, stand on the floor for the community he lives in and has a viable supposed business in and not ask for the state government to send financial relief to a city like Harvey while everybody's yelling about illegal immigration and Trump? I'm gonna say this because this also comes on the tail end of me right after leaving Dalton where not one moment in that time did we see JB Priska put his foot forward to handle what he called in the national news, his people's problem. He didn't help Dalton and I guarantee you, where is he at right now? I made several calls when I saw this and this is what I'm trying to figure out. Why are these people yelling that they don't have the information that Kobe Chapman puts online all the time? She always puts the bills list up. She always put projected, uh, uh, budgets up. We always have the ability to go sit down in the finance committee where it is literally less than half of the people who are sitting inside of the village meetings getting an understanding of what the realities are for the goddamn finances of the community. I don't have a whole lot of patience for foolishness. And that's why y'all see me move around and not respond. And it is simply because we literally don't get paid for this shit. And for the, so, and for the, for the guy to make this about me versus the reality of this community or anybody to try to make this about me and not the reality of the community, they're not serious. Because why is it that I'm more concerned about what's going on with Harvey than seemingly the residents? I understand that maybe this was a last-minute meeting that was not. But I want to say this in good faith. It is my understanding that they didn't even realize the reality of the community because they've been waiting on resources. And when it got to the point where they realized that those resources was not coming, they had to make a special meeting. Somebody said, I'm new here, do the fifteen thousand subscribers usually trickle in? No. But guess what? I'm not talking about things that impact their life directly. So I don't know what the point of that statement was, but I'm gonna be very clear here. If you call me for a special meeting, an emergency meeting, a regular meeting or any other kind of meeting in the community that I live in or care about, I'm going to be there. Wait a minute, just like I'm paying attention now. I want to be very clear here. For that church not to have been packed and they're talking about the finance. For that church not to have been packed, and they're talking about the financial reality of the community that doesn't even have half of the people who live there voting, let's be very clear here. Not shame on me or anybody else, shame on them. But I guarantee you, a lot of people are going to complain about the financial reality of the city. You said, relax. I don't know if you realize, but I'm using the exact same tone that I was using when I spoke before I acknowledged your question. This is just how I talk. No need for me to relax because I'm fine. It's called passion. I'm so sorry that when black people have heightened expression, people don't know how to take it because we're supposed to be better, look better, work harder, be smarter, and everything else. I'm not my grandparents. I'm gonna be my authentic God-given self, and you either gonna take it or you not. And just like I told the fifteen thousand, you can make this your last time viewing the broadcast because it will not make or break me because right now, I'm mad as hell. I'm watching the governor of the state of Illinois fight and give $750 billion in appropriations for illegal immigrants. And you mean to tell me that they can't bail out a city that got less than $200 million in financial issues? Are you telling me right now that I shouldn't be mad when we're told to fight and resist? And in my mind, so that we can not look at what the Democrats have failed to do in our own, black, predominantly black community? The whole damn country is worried about people who don't even have legal right to be here. And this is what I'm talking about. Are they gonna talk about this on the national stage? You know why they're not? Because black people sleep at the wheel, they don't show up for their own shit. Literally, we are part of the problem, and then here is the part that don't nobody want to hear. As long as somebody act like they're fighting for us, we don't know what good health looks like. And that's what, that is what Kobe Chapman is hoping for. Neither one of the aldermen got on that damn screen and told us or told us about how they would step in and have, and have any, any type of plan, agenda, thought, meeting, or anything else to address the financial crisis of Harvey. Not one of them. But I'm not an elected representative, and I got a right to feel this way because announcements are forthcoming. But I've been spending hella time trying to convince Walgreens to come back to Harvey, Illinois. It is not okay. It's not cool. It's not alright. And I am so sick of living in a fantasy of black power and upward mobility when I've got to consistently watch the only person that act like they got some damn education be a white person. It is unfortunate, and it is sickening to me. I'm gonna say it for the record. Kobe Chapman ain't gonna be able to do shit that that man can do or can't do because she don't even demonstrate having those kind of relationships right now. They don't even know how to handle a advocate. They don't even know how to handle a advocate that have been proven to hold everybody accountable when necessary, who comes with my own diamond resource. They don't even know how to handle me. So I know the hell she ain't gonna be able to handle a city. And when I say handle me, handle somebody who don't agree or determine what she told me was a lie, have my own mind and opinion, and they rather try to shake people's opinion of me than outwork me. And I mean what I said, they including her. And so, I'm going to say this to be very clear. And this is something that I was just messaged by a good friend of mine that's obviously tuned into the broadcast. Hey, homie, they said, how is it that the state gave the Harvey Park millions of dollars? But they ain't gave nothing to the city? Guess what? Connect the dots. I want you all to get what I'm trying to tell you. Number one, they intentionally are trying to make Harvey fail. We will make that case at the appropriate time. They don't like the fact that that smart black man is independent and strong in his thinking, and he is not putting Harvey up for sale or grabs. And you can listen to the rumor mill, or you can listen to somebody who are proving time and time again that I know what I'm talking about when I say I know what I'm talking about. Harvey is up for grabs because it is a central point that people want for their dynasty. They don't give a damn about the majority seniors that live in that community. Because if they did, let me tell you something that you would not want to hear if you don't like the truth. They don't have to wait in a democratically controlled state. Those people that are in Cook County government could solve this crisis in one meeting. Do you think that all of the Democratic leaders across the state are going to come together for a now south suburban city that is in distress? Like they just did for illegal immigrants being arrested and taken out of the community? Hell, no. Unless, unless, unless the people of the city make their voices heard. If this was ever a time, if there was ever a time for Harvey to matter, that matter, that time is to do it right now. And I got, I guarantee you that if Harvey don't look for a reason to complain but find its resolve and its self-determination to recognize the moment that your mayor just declared that your city is distressed, he as a, at the helm of your government, just saying, look, I've been doing this as much and as best I can. I need help to get us out of this. He could have quit the job. He could have resigned. He could have shut the entire government down and looked the other way. He could have done a million things, but what did he do? He said, this is our reality. This is what we need to do about it. And if we can get some help, we can get right back to where we, where we were, if not better. And the only people who won't realize that or recognize that or stand next to that or help that are people who got their own, their own agendas. And I'm gonna be clear about this. Before you can save a city, you need to save your ponytail. And I know Jedediah is just a different kind of man. I go where I need to go, and some of these people reside in hell, and I meet them there, I'm gonna get the keys, and I'm gonna do it just like my Lord is saying. When I get the keys, I'm gonna take the sting out of your foolishness. But I was so happy to hear that it was only two people clapping. And if you listen to the clap, one of those claps sounded a little bit like this. Get your, sit your gay ass. You know what? I'm gonna be honest. I thank the Lord, hallelujah, because every day he delivering me. I don't want to be associated. My rainbow is gone. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna go buy me a flag tomorrow. Burn that bitch, because you will never see me. But you want to be the toughest talking motherfucker in the room. You always got something to say. Always want to be in, in somebody's face. I did, I never knew that you can literally hear how somebody is clapping until I was just listening to it a moment ago. Did you? Where and when is your balls gonna drop? If you gonna be a man in everybody's business, when the hell are you gonna buy some test? Get that bitch some testosterone shots. I'm, I mean it. This is, and then people say, oh, they trying to make it like it's old so bad because Jedediah. Let me tell you something. While that was going on, I was helping the domestic. I'm still finna deal with the domestic violence situation. So please don't tell me how to respond. You have no clue of the kind of pressure that is on my shoulders and the seat that I'm sitting in. But this is what I'm going to tell you. Harvey got a champion on their side. And when I get done with this situation that I gotta deal with tomorrow, I'm finna flap my black ass, and it's cold up there. It's cold in Chicago. I left Chicago this morning. I got there in Chicago yesterday morning, went to court, kicked some ass by sitting there looking cruel. And then after I kicked ass doing nothing but sitting there looking at people make a fool of theirself, I went to sleep, got up early in the morning, this morning, got on a plane, and I got the fuck out of there. Now, what am I about to do? I'm about to go handle a situation with domestic violence, and by tomorrow night or the morning after, I'm gonna take my black ass right back to Chicago because somebody gotta stand up for Harvey. So Harvey, today, pick your poison. Do you want to deal with the complainers, or do you want to move, be with the movers and the shakers? And I, I, I promise you before God Almighty, announcements are coming forthcoming, and I want to put it on the record. I know for a whole fact your mayor is fighting for the community. But how the hell, after this man just explained, basically, y'all not getting none of the money, somebody gonna turn around and say, we need to see the money. You ain't got none. Jesus Christ. And I, I'm gonna say, man, if they don't, I don't know what. I want to ask them. If you looking at the bills list, if you know the fact that the government is taking 35% of your grants, if you know for a fact that y'all are less than a 60% collection rate as it relates to your property taxes, if you know that majority of the businesses are not paying their taxes because they got shut down so much they don't comply because there's no T in the local municipality to hold them accountable? If you know this, well, what are you saying? See? That man ain't even disrespectful. He not even disrespectful. He just orderly. He said, basically, I just want to be able to hold the meeting the proper way. They want to just have something to talk about. I don't like that. I don't like that. So you can come up there and complain about a man who ain't even in the building? Jedediah said that he called ICE bitch, and I'll call him again. Now, you got that? Put it on the record. I'll call him again. This black man, do not believe in the mistreatment of no human being. But I sure as hell support the deportation of illegals, especially those are criminal prone, and sweaters those who are taking residents out of the mouth of the people who live in the motherfucker. If it's what needs to be done, thank your Donald Trump. And guess what? What does it mean? Because I am not the mayor of Harvey, and I don't work for Clark. He ain't my daddy. I don't like, it ain't nothing weird going on. I didn't even know the motherfucker until you called me into the city to come and find out the corruption. Well, I found the corruption, booger. It's your dumb ass. And guess what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna make sure that Harvey blow your ass out of its ability to breathe. With that being said, I hope I said something to that about, I say a lot of prayers. Because now, I'm gonna do something I ain't never done before. Instead of fighting the government, I'm gonna fight for the government. And if you ain't a subscriber, then guess what? This will be the moment that you hit that motherfucking like, share, and subscribe. Because I promise you this, I don't know about what they gonna do, but they're taking this personal because I'm representing a fight for Harvey, and I don't need nobody fucking permission to do it because I'm a US citizen with the rights that are given to me by the Constitution. And I'm gonna make sure that Harvey gets out of this mess. Because guess what? It's me versus the motherfucking B-NA. And I know for a fact, I know for a fact, they ain't ready for what I'm coming with. So with that being said, we on go mode. And this is my message to Mayor Clark. As long as you doing right by these people, you got a friend in fucking me. Let's go.